All right. It is seven o'clock. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like the public to know that pursuant to the Governor's executive order N 2920, and in the interest of the public health and safety, members of the Planning Commission and staff may attend the meeting telephonically. Further order from the San Diego County Health Officer, prevent persons other than city officials and essential employees to be physically present. The public may view this meeting, excuse me, may view this meeting, submit comments on an item on this agenda, or submit a public comment through the Zoom webinar meeting. Please click on the Q and A icon in the Zoom meeting screen to submit the public comment. Public comments will be accepted until the conclusion of the public hearing on each item. Please be sure to include the item number or name in the comment. Comments will be limited to 300 words and will be entered into the official commission meeting record. Public comments are being accepted now, so please submit your comments as soon as possible. You do not need to wait until an item is called to submit a comment. Comments will be read during the meeting. Commissioners, if you have a question or comment, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Only one person may speak at a time. With that being said, I call this meeting to order. We will do our flag salute, and as we've been doing recently, we stay seated so that we stay in our frames. And if you are on the panel, please make sure you're muted so we don't have lots of echoes. All right. Right hands salute. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Circo.
Present.
Commissioner Moros.
Present.
Commissioner Pollock Rude.
Present.
Commissioner Sotile.
Present.
And Commissioner Vias.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Welcome to Elkhorn Planning Commission Meeting. Appeals to final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 PM Monday, April 19, 2021, and must include the payment of the filing fee. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 114-79, a commissioner who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission, other than an unescorted view of the subject property, is required to disclose such information at the hearing. This time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward under public comment, except to refer it to staff or administration, or place it on a future agenda. This is the time for the public to address the commission by submitting their comments by Q and A in Zoom. We will wait a few moments and see if any have already been submitted. And I'll remind the public at this point, if you have any questions, if you have any comments on any item on the agenda tonight, you can post those as soon as you come up with the question, and we'll read them at the appropriate time. Do we have any public comments?
Commissioner Circo, we have no comments.
All right. I feel like we just lost somebody. I'm trying to see who it is. Oh, it's Elizabeth. Okay, well, I'm sure she will be back on shortly. All right. This, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does the commission wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion? All right. Does the staff wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. All right, then we just need a motion, a second.
Move to adopt calendar.
Second it.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Rose, second by Commissioner Sotile. Roll vote, please.
Right, Commissioner Circo.
Present, present. Hi, yes, I am present. That would be a yes.
Right, Commissioner Moros.
Yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vias, I still don't see her. Are you back, Commissioner Vias?
She has not rejoined the meeting yet.
Okay. So motion carried. Four to zero?
Quick question for Barbara Luck. With the way that our meeting, sometimes we lose somebody. If we lose somebody just before we vote, should we continue with the vote, or should we wait until you are muted at the moment?
I knew that. With it just being the consent calendar, four is more than a quorum. I think you can consider that passed, but I think that we should try to fix any technical difficulties before a vote on substance takes place.
Okay. Yeah. Does anybody have Commissioner Vias's phone number that we can text and make sure she's getting back on?
I do, and Chairperson Circo, give me a thumb up in there too.
Absolutely, thank you.
She did email and said that she was trying to get back on, but her system shut down.
Oh, no. All right. So we will take the motion and votes as as stated.
Okay.
All right. And I hesitate to move on into the public hearing without Commissioner Vias. I want to make sure all commissioners get to hear the entire presentation. So if the public will bear with us for a few moments, we will try to reconnect with Commissioner Vias. I see you popped back up in the attendees. Welcome back, Commissioner Vias.
All right, I'm trying to do this off my iPad. Sorry, I don't know what, why it suddenly, Zoom suddenly stopped on my computer.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Fair enough, welcome back, and we will continue on to the public hearings. The first item under public hearings is item number two. It is the Broadway Banquet Hall. It's a request for a banquet hall with on sale service. It is sequoia exempt, and staff is recommending approval. Staff, why didn't you take it from here?
Thank you, Chairman Circo. The item before you today is the Broadway Banquet Hall project. The applicant is Honeytoma on behalf of Martoma LLC. The project description is that the project involves the demolition of existing commercial structures on the property at 1120 Broadway, and the construction of a 21,583 square foot banquet hall with associated parking lot, lighting, and landscaping. They are also proposing on sale alcohol service in conjunction with the banquet hall, so alcohol service along with food. The proposed hours of operation are daily from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and the banquet hall does have a maximum capacity of up to 1,000 guests. The site at 1120 Broadway is designated general commercial in the general plan, which is intended for a wide variety of commercial uses, and it is also zoned CG or general commercial. A CUP is required for a banquet hall, as it is a public assembly use, and a CUP is also required for on sale alcohol service, both within the CG zone. This is an aerial image of the subject site on Broadway between First and Oro Street. It is an L-shaped parcel, approximately 1.48 acres. And here you can see the existing small commercial building in the middle of the property and surface parking lot. It's most recently been used as a leasing facility. There is the Broadway Creek Channel that runs along the northern perimeter of the site, and the site is also within portions of, are within the 100 and 500 year flood zone, so the building does have to be raised slightly above the base flood elevation to account for that. This is the site plan. I had to orient it, orient it, and so the north would be to the left side of your screen. And it shows that the banquet hall itself is located in the corner, the northeast corner of the site, which made the most sense for the applicant in terms of laying out the large footprint needed for the banquet hall. There are 104 parking spaces in the remainder of the site, and there's new landscaping located along this front setback, as well as in Finger Islands throughout the parking lot. There'll also be new lighting standards as well. This is the floor plan. As you can see, there are two lobbies that are accessed from the western side of the building, and this allows for the large banquet space to be divided up into two smaller banquet spaces if needed. There are also bathrooms on the first floor and a kitchen facility. On the second floor, there is storage in an elevator to access items that will need to be stored for the banquet halls, such as chairs and tables and those types of things. This is two of the elevations. The west elevation, as I mentioned, is the primary entrance to the banquet hall, and you can see those storefront glass systems demarcating those two entrances. There are a wide variety of different materials that are used in the contemporary design. You'll see that there's, you know, some cool and warm earth tones in the form of stucco, some metal cladding around the pillars, as well as the wood grain metal paneling, the brown material that you see, and as well as some CMU stucco. So we did work with the applicant to make sure that we had expression of architecture on each of the sides. So you'll see that there's some wraparound of some features here on the south elevation, which faces Broadway, although it's not completely visible because of the buildings between Broadway and the banquet hall. The north and the east elevation, the east elevation is close to the property line, so it has no windows or entrances, and the north elevation would be what faces the residential neighborhood to the north. That is within unincorporated San Diego County, but there are several residences located just to the north of this property. And this is a rendering of the banquet hall when completed and potentially operational, and kind of you can see all the different materials and colors that I mentioned previously. So the land use and design considerations for the project, the applicant is proposing a new modern banquet facility with a contemporary design, and it is a facility that is, was built and intended to be used as a banquet hall facility. There are five other banquet halls in Elkhone, however, most of these are in older buildings that don't quite have the amenities and the layout that this particular facility will have, and also has the ability to accommodate larger events. It is located on the Broadway corridor, which is a commercial corridor, although we have seen in recent years that there is very low demand for commercial, new commercial spaces. There's been lots of empty vacant buildings sitting, you know, for an extended period of time. So we do see that there, there have also been commercial buildings that have been converted to non-commercial uses, such as the Walgreens that was converted to the pay center at Second and Broadway, and then there's the former grocery store just to the west of that, that is in the process of being converted to a church. So we do see that as a potential viable use of some of these older commercial properties that may not, you know, potentially be of interest for further commercial development to be more developed with these types of uses. In terms of compatibility, the property is primarily surrounded by commercial uses to the south, the east, and the west. However, there, there are residential uses to the north, and so we've thought very carefully through some conditions of approval that we think will help to ensure compatibility with some of the larger events or events that may continue on into the evening hours, and I'll cover those shortly. The last consideration is the parking reduction that is requested. So through the zoning code, commercial properties have the ability to request that up to 800 square feet of their floor area be exempt from parking. And this provision was really intended for, you know, older commercial properties that maybe needed some additional storage space, but they were constrained with lack of parking. But in using it here, it allows for a portion of that second story space for storage to not require parking. The rest of the site is parked at the ratio of one space per 200 square feet of floor area, which is the standard for a public assembly use. So they're simply requesting a reduction of four spaces. The conditions of approval will include a few that are intended to ensure compatibility with adjacent residential uses. The first is that the operator provide a parking lot attendant for events that would extend beyond 10:00 PM. The intent there is that we ensure that the activities in the parking lot, as people are leaving, or you may be continuing the evening but stepping outside, do not become a disturbance to the neighbors, either with noise or lighting or any other type of activity. There will be a masonry wall that's required along the northern property line. This would be on the south side of the channel, and this will also help with any potential noise or maybe lights from vehicles as they're entering and exiting the facility. And then lastly, there is a condition of approval for an event management plan, and this is for much larger events, so events over 500 guests, where there could be a need for overflow parking, or there could be a, a large number of vehicles trying to access the site at one time. And so here, we would be looking for the applicant operator just to put together a plan for how they're going to accommodate that, and we think that will ensure smooth operations and continued compatibility of this project with the surrounding neighborhood. This project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under a Section 32 infill exemption, so that is for urbanized properties of five acres or less that have no potential for habitat or for other impacts. And so this property is completely disturbed and has been developed previously, and none of the exceptions to the categorical exemption apply here. So we believe that this is an appropriate exemption. The staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the next resolutions in order, approving the sequoia exemption and conditional use permit number 2020-0001, subject to conditions. And that concludes staff's presentation. I do believe the architect, Jean Sabroni, is available as part of our attendees, and the property owner, Honeytoma, may also be available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's, I did want to ask a question, because we're, there are two CUPs required. One is for the banquet hall, and one is for the on sale alcohol service. But this looks like it's only for one CUP. Is there a second motion that we need to make at the end of this?
It is one CUP that covers both conditional uses.
Okay. That was one curiosity. And then I know as we were talking about this, there's part of the design for the lobby is that it's double doored to keep the noise of the banquet inside the banquet hall, especially for late banquets. Noise issues are one of our greatest complaints in neighborhoods, and even though north of Broadway, Broadway Creek isn't Elkhone City, we do want to keep the residents happy with our city. So any sound abatement issues that we can address ahead of time are wonderful. I think you already mentioned that we've got five other banquet halls in Elkhone, and all of them are operating.
As far as I know, they're all in operation, although I believe many of them have paused having events during the pandemic.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from commissioners for staff?
I have one.
Mr. Sotile.
Regarding the perimeter of the property, will there be any like wrought iron fencing or any fencing at all, keep away unwanted visitors? Such as homeless people?
Yes, the applicant has stated that they do intend to put up wrought iron fencing along the frontage, as well as vehicular gates to secure the property when it's not in use.
Okay. And there'll be plenty of lighting?
Yes, there will be. Yes, they'll be required to do a photometric study as well as part of the building permit to ensure they have adequate lighting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vias.
And I just have a quick question. This was kind of, I guess, in reference to the findings, item D. It talks about things, you know, not being limited to matters of noise, smoke, dust, you know, and so forth. And I know that, like, Elkhone has a smoking ordinance that even extends to outside areas. How does that come into play with this, with this new development?
That this subject, this development would be subject to our tobacco ordinance, just like any other place of business or public place of accommodation would be subject to it, so there would be no smoking indoors or outdoors.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? All right. Seeing none. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Staff, did we get any questions, comments from participants?
We have not as of yet.
All right, the architect was Jean, you said?
That's correct, Jean Sabroni is the architect.
Jean Sabroni. I'm sure Jean would love to answer a quick question about the sound abatement for the building. If we can get him promoted.
Yes. We have hired Elger Associates, a acoustical engineering firm, to do a study of the exterior wall that we need to meet or exceed the sound ordinance. They'll be out there taking sound readings from around the property to incorporate into the report. And we will develop a wall section that exceeds the sound ordinance requirements.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions for the architect while we have them up? No, all right. Thank you, Jean, for answering that question.
Sure.
Do we have any members of the public who wish to make a comment? And do we have any commissioners who have a question for somebody other than the architect? Commissioner Vias?
Not so much a question, but just a comment that I really, the design looks really nice. I think it would be a nice modernization to that area. Again, living in Elkhone for a long time, some of those areas have stayed looking the same for a few generations, so it looks, it reminds me a little bit of, I didn't know if this was the same architect that did the animal shelter. It had a similar feel. But it's a very nice design, I thought.
As it's got a contemporary look, I was kind of sad that it couldn't be, you know, more fronted on Broadway so you could see it better, but looking at the lot and the way the, the channel runs, there's just no way to squeeze it in the front and put the parking behind it.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, Paul. I thought it was a great looking building, and unfortunately, it can't come out too far, you know?
All right. I'll make a motion to close. Oh.
Sorry, just a quick question regarding, because I actually know this area, because I go to meetings just down the street. My only concern is, not that anything could be done about it, but in regards to parking, getting in and out, because it's so close to that light, so my only concern is traffic going in and out, if there's any kind of function, how the traffic control could be done in that, because if you have a lot of people trying to turn, because a lot of cars park on that street and there's a lot of blind spots, and not that there's anything that could be done, but if it could be, you know, like a right turn only or something, and some of the exits just to, you know, as opposed to that light. I don't know, I think COVID is, there's not as many people on the streets, but I'm just thinking when you have more traffic, that's I think people could use their common sense, hopefully, but it just, just because of location and going in and out of there. That's my only concern. Or maybe if there's no parking, because there's the, all the street parking there, maybe at a certain distance, they can put a red zone or something.
Melissa, you just muted yourself.
Thank you. I was just going to offer that we could take another look at that with the event management plan to see if there are any, you know, temporary measures that could be put in place during large events to, to help with that.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Roll vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Circo?
Yes.
Commissioner Moros?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vias?
Yes.
Motion carried, unanimous vote.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. As far as other developments, once this building is in place, there will probably be more coming before us. It is one of those weird twists of, well, it's banquet hall, the on sale use exceeds the number of allowed licenses for the zone, but nobody really has a problem with that right now, because it's tied to events, and right now, we don't know how many events are going to happen. This building will take probably more than a year to get built, because they have to demolish first and get all the plans approved, but once the building is up and running, I hope that our business owners are successful and that their business model succeeds in this area. I know the city of Elkhone has lots of banquet halls, and it doesn't seem to deter people from opening new banquet halls, so that's a we'll see if that works better for Broadway. We've had a lot of businesses that have come and gone on Broadway, and hopefully, this one fits.
Yeah.
Well, if you think about weddings, weddings are recession proof. But even when there's a recession, weddings still go on. People spend money in events like that. Hopefully that will be the case.
Any further discussion?
I don't think so.
It's a good project. It looks nice, the building. Like you said, Commissioner Circo, that it's sad that it's kind of hidden in the front of the building where it's sitting to the side. But you know, the configuration of the property is what it is. You can't change that, but I think it's a good project. And I would like to make a motion if I may.
Go for it.
I move to adopt the next resolution in order of proving the CEQA exempt and CUP number 2020 dash zero 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 one, subject to conditions.
Second that.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Rose. Roll vote, please.
All right, Commissioner Circo?
Yes.
Commissioner Moros?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vias?
Yes.
Motion carried by unanimous vote.
All right. For the CUP, the planning commission's action on this item is final unless appealed with the filing of a form and the payment of a filing fee no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, April 19th, 2021, in the city clerk's office. All right. Our next item on the agenda. It's that time of year again. It's April. And I keep thinking that it keeps moving back, but it's always in April. Time to elect a chair and vice chair for the next year. And so if anybody has any suggestions they want to put forth, if they want to make a motion on shoving somebody in the chair seat, now is the time to do it.
All right, well, I'll make a motion for Commissioner Sotile to be chairman.
I will second that. I'll let Commissioner Pollock Rude second that. As long as Commissioner Sotile is okay with it.
You're muted.
He's staying muted.
Yes, I'm okay.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Rose, seconded by Commissioner Pollock Rude. Roll vote.
Commissioner Circo?
Yes.
Commissioner Moros?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vias?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Congratulations Chair Sotile. We do need a vice chair for any times that the chair is not available. And
I'd like to make a nomination.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Darren Moros for vice chair.
I will second that. As long as Commissioner Rose is okay with it.
That's fine.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Circo. A roll vote.
All right, Commissioner Circo?
Yes.
Commissioner Moros?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vias?
Yes.
Motion carried by unanimous vote.
Congratulations to our vice chair.
Thank you.
All right, we have project updates from the staff.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen quickly. So I provided this to you before, which is just an update of some of the bigger projects that are either under construction that have been approved or are under review. So in terms of what we have going on under construction in El Cajon right now, Legacy Town Homes is the first project featured there on Washington. And they're still, as you can see, still working on site work, though the exterior of the buildings are looking fairly well completed. The Rocky Hill Point Project, which is on Anastasia Court off of Washington, 26 new townhomes. That one is moving along quickly. And I think they're going to be seeking occupancy of some of those first units here shortly. The Lexington Avenue Apartments Project, that's a 10 unit project over at 235 East Lexington, across from the fire station. That one is going up quite quickly. So drive by when you get the opportunity, just so you can see some of the work that's going on there. I think it's gonna be a great project and add a lot to that neighborhood.
Is that what's going on right across from the library?
To the south? Yes.
Okay, I was curious what was going up there. That's what it is. Thank you.
Over on Wells, there are four units, two duplexes that have been under construction for some time. They're getting ready to complete the final set of requirements for that. The Mazda dealership at 572 North Johnson near the 8 freeway. That one seems to be changing on a daily basis. They're still working on the basic building work on that project. And no updates unfortunately on the 101 East Main Street mixed use project yet. We're hopeful that that one's still, we're still going to see a shovel in the ground, but I haven't heard any movement. There's the new industrial building going up at 850 West Bradley. And it's a little hard to see. I keep going by there every month or so to see if I can see it from the street and I can't quite so far, but I'm sure we will soon. The new Starbucks at 850 North Second. I think they've completed all their framing and I think they're doing exterior stucco and interior work now. The Dent Industrial Projects, that's the second phase of the large industrial project on Marshall Avenue. So the, the northerly part of that site, they're doing site work now. And they should be having building permits issued any day now. They're ready for issuance. The Marshall Personal Storage Project over on Marshall Avenue, that one is under plan review in our building division. And so they're working through all of that. The Lexington Senior Apartments Project, that's the large rehabilitation project of our 100 unit affordable senior project. So not a lot of exterior work yet. They're doing a lot of the interior work, but we should hopefully soon be seeing a small front addition, a lobby addition, as well as new paint and new improvements there. The Parkway Plaza Self-Storage Project, that's in the basement of what was the former Sears Building. The building plans are under review for that project. As well as a new mixed use conversion project at 333 West Lexington. This is an older office building that's actually been a bit problematic in recent years because of transient activity. And they are going to be adding two residential units to that and rehabbing that structure, portions of that structure. 270 Fletcher Parkway, the old Long John Silver will soon become a new Mission Federal Credit Union. And that one is under review as well on the building side. And then you may have heard quite a bit about this one recently in the news. The Distribution Center at Weld and Quyamaca was recently approved, so that will be a new over 100,000 square foot distribution center. And that will bring in some funding to County Airports who owns the site through the long-term lease of that property, as well as potentially some jobs for El Cajon. And then in terms of approved projects, I don't think any of these are new to you folks. These are mostly projects that have come through the planning commission in recent years. Storage District at 1338 East Main. This is probably one of the more recent ones, as well as the battery storage at 222 North Johnson. And then in terms of what we have in our queue under review right now and planning, an expansion to St. Madeline Sophie Center has been in process for some time. They had to put their plans on hold for a little bit while they worked on another project. But I think we'll see that one back soon. And there's a new seven, seven unit townhouse project over on Oakdale and Durham, and that one's under review. And there's a gas station, proposed gas station at 720 South Molson. The applicant has chosen to place that one on hold and is currently considering some options there. And then a new hangar and maintenance building on airport property over on Kenny Street, Circle Air Hangar, has waiting, we're waiting for a reset middle on that. And then at 1369 East Main, so near Melody and East Main, there's a multifamily common interest development that's under review in that location. So it looks like
The vacant location there. Is that where all offices were on the corner?
And the, for Melody, the Melody condominium project? It is a portion of the trailer park that's located there that was RV storage. It's been used for RV storage for a long period of time. But it's they're proposing to amend that CUP to take it out of that trailer park and then build new condominiums there. The Magnolia Heights Project, hasn't been a lot of action on that lately, but that is the amendment to the 1333 South Magnolia, the approved planned residential development to add nine new additional lots. So that one's pending reset middle as well as an auto repair at 1316 Broadway. Few more, we have the Noronca Plan Unit Development at 1325 Noronca. That's three. A three unit, single family residential development for sale. That one's in process. As well as the townhomes at 300 El Cajon Boulevard. So that's 116 new condominium townhomes. The car wash that you saw at 816 North Second is back in to expand that car wash onto an adjacent property. So you'll be seeing that one again soon. And then there is a project for some athletic field improvements at Shadow Mountain Community Church, which you will see at the next planning commission hearing. And then lastly, we have a proposal for eight new townhomes at 350 South Magnolia that's under review. Does anyone have any questions about any of these projects? And of course, I will send this out to everyone tomorrow as well.
Yes, Melissa, the ones on Washington, they look like they're townhouses, the very first one that you mentioned. I noticed there's a large sign that says for rent, but I don't see any signs for, for sale. They only for rent and not for sale units?
This one right here, Legacy?
Yes, correct.
That one is mapped as condominiums, but I do understand that the property owner tends to hold those and rent them out.
That's what it seems like to me, as rental units. I wanted to clarify that.
Any further questions on?
The 19 home, I'm sorry, the 19 homes over at Shadow Mountain that we approved a while back. Have you heard any more about that?
Not recently, no, I have not.
Okay.
I haven't heard much about it either. As far as I know, the developer is still looking into something to do with the slope. Even though all the plans had the slope figured out and all that, the developer. We're, we're waiting to find out what the developer is going to do. All right, any other questions on the project updates? All right, we do have a commissioner report. Commissioner Vias went to the Planning Commissioners Academy training. Commissioner Vias, would you like to share with us?
Sure. Well, first I would like to thank the city for providing this training. It was very, I'm staving off Alzheimer's with all that I'm learning. So it was really, it was very interesting. Some rather humorous speakers to keep what could be, you know, kind of dry content, sometimes very entertaining. I still have a few, a few sessions to review because it was taking place during my work hours, so I was reviewing it afterwards. And they allowed for by attending that, a free attendance for the upcoming ethics session, which I'll be doing this Friday. And then the harassment, so I won't be harassing anybody next Friday. So, and then that should be, that should be complete. So I do, I have to say, going through a lot of different kinds of educational conferences, the, the virtual world does make it nice because if you miss something, there's always that opportunity to go back and, you know, you know, listen to it again and then download the talk. So but I now have all these new acronyms with CEQA and RENA and, and everything, so. Yep, but it was, it was great. So thank you very much. And it's, it helps as I'm going through these different as learning the different projects, understanding when Melissa was talking about the exemptions and what that meant and that I didn't have to worry about anything there. So, so it's great.
Awesome. All right.
Question for Melissa.
Go ahead.
Will there be a baby zoomers training meeting? So that, I think I have it figured out, or maybe zoomers?
For zoomers? Well, I have some good news for you, Commissioner Sotile. We may be back to in-person meetings in May. So city council will be trying out in-person meetings this month. And we'll evaluate and see how that's working. And so this may be the second to the last online Zoom Planning Commission meeting that you have to attend.
Very good. Then you'll have an ignorant baby zoomer.
But I'm always available. If you need some help or if you'd like to go over some things, I'm more than happy.
Right, thank you very much.
All right, last item on our
Paul, I'm sorry. Did you have a last item? Because I was
It's only adjournment.
All right, I, since Commissioner Vias wasn't present during the vote on the consent item, did you have anything to add or change in the minutes?
No, no, and I apologize for the Zoom just
Oh, that's okay. I just want to make sure you have a chance to it passed forward to nothing, which is a quorum, but I wanted to make sure you had a chance.
Oh, but thank you. Yes, I would have, I would have voted to pass it, so it would have been fine.
Thank you. All right, all their items of business have been taken care of. I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting to April 20th. Motion made by Commissioner Circo, seconded by Commissioner Pollock Rude. Roll vote, please.
All right, Commissioner Circo?
Yes.
Commissioner Moros?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vias?
Yes.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
That one never fails. All right, thank you very much. We will see you in two weeks. Have a good night.